That's right. Good evening. I call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, December 5th, 2013, at 7:03. First agenda item is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would join us, please stand.
Please bow. Dear heaven, Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. Father, we thank you for your many blessings. Father, we ask that you would guide these many women in their decisions, that they be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item, two, is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
We have an addition request under 8E by Fire Chief Cooper to add, discuss, and/or take action on firehouse sub grant. I'd also like to amend the words on 8A for saying Finance Review Committee. And the second is 8B to scratch from the sentence from Mayor's recommendation, and it would read, "Discuss and/or take action on vacant planning commission seat." Any other additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had placed a letter up at your spots dealing with the LPRF grant. This letter is to go to the state, letting them know that we are turning the grant back in. So it needs to be added for action or discussion or action on approving this letter.
Mayor, I'd like to see that go to a workshop, maybe an hour before the next meeting, so we can have ample time to discuss it.
So we have word changes on 8A, 8B, addition of 8E for the firehouse grant. There be any other additions or subtractions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is citizens' comments. We have this evening Ms. Carla Arnie. Would you please approach the podium? You have three minutes to deliver your comments or questions. Welcome.
My name is Carla Arnie. I live at 7508 Opry Ridge Place here in Fairview. I'm here tonight because I am gravely concerned, also about the public perception of our city. I'm also dismayed at the lack of professionalism and good judgment that has been exhibited in recent days. I'm appalled that the venue of social media and an editorial style of journalism was used to demean servants of our city, as well as our most recently hired employees. I'm the mother of six children, most of them grown, and I learned very early that when I was confronted with an informer, that it was very important for me to not only listen to the scoop, but to objectively investigate and weigh out the personal advantages that that informer may be hoping to benefit from with their tattling. I would also like to thank you, Commissioner Bisso, for your editorial letter to the editor. The truth regarding the hiring of our new and our existing employees was enlightening, and I hope everyone takes the time to read it. It will certainly clarify misconceptions that were presented. Twenty-one years ago today, the Arnie family came to Fairview. We were embraced by the community, and we knew we had found our home. For seventeen years of that time, my husband served this city in various ways. Three years ago, by the people's choice, he stepped out of that arena. It was a sad day for him, but honey, I'm sorry to say, it was a relief in many ways for me and my children. The role of a political servant comes with great distress at times, but also with great rewards. I am proud of his role in forwarding our city, and I'm also honored that I was able to support him on the sidelines. I presume that after we lost that election, we would support and aid Fairview in a less public manner. Perhaps now, for me, anyway. Maybe not. Thank you for your time, and may God bless each of you and our great city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andy Jones, would you approach the podium, please? Welcome.
I'm Andy Jones, Fairview, Tennessee, Fairview Boulevard. Alan, I was quick to judge you beginning, but I know that you're here for the people. You should have been interviewed in the article. The letter you submitted submitted nicely, since it directly from you can rely on, unlike the paper. Thank you for what you've done here in our city and your son by taking care of the park. Patty, I am also proud of you and your husband, the sacrifices both of you have made and should be welcomed as all citizens. I am also proud of your direct post showing where the problem lies, after Alan's letter broke the truth came out exposing our mayor. Tony, we've had, we not always have things seen eye to eye, but that being said, I have prayed about it, and I let it go. I thank you doing a tremendous job for our city. Also, your son is doing a great job as well. Every time he steps up to the podium, he has all the facts together, convinced him professionally. And again, thank you for whatever, what all you do here in Fairview. Stuart, we don't agree on every vote you take, but you have done so much for Fairview. Evidently, you're doing something right, because we have elected you four times. You're better not resign, because the city of Fairview needs a leader. Beverly, you should, you should be ashamed of the negative light that you cast out on our city. It seems like every positive step that these guys take, you try to hinder them. And I'm not sure how they do things in Louisiana, but a developer that is a real estate agent that also happens to be the mayor should have better than to bring negative publicity in such a widespread method. Why would you want people who might be looking forward to moving to the next home to Fairview and put in the paper something that they don't, that we have problems? You don't know, don't want them to move here? I don't know. Well, all that truth, there was no problem with the family until opponent's family, due to the election in eleven months, you slapped the citizens of Fairview in the face. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. Al Toroli. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Al Toroli, Castleberry Farm in Fairview. I'm a new board member for the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. One of the items on your agenda tonight is a tree thinning project. Though I have no knowledge of what you're going to discuss, or, excuse me, I'm getting over cold, or any action that you may take on that subject, I would like to remind you of a letter from Mr. Doug Rodman, Forester and Middle Tennessee Project Manager at the Land Trust, to then-city manager, Mr. Hyatt, on August 21st, 2012. This was basically an approval of the forest, the high-level forest management plan that the city had presented to them. However, he goes on to say, however, before any timber harvesting or other, so the cultural practices are applied to the forest, a detailed harvesting plan or management prescription must also be submitted for approval that accomplishes the following, end quote. He lists four items. I'm just going to reference one, and that is, addresses the concerns of the Friends of Bowie Park and others, including its impact on wildlife, water quality, reforestation, et cetera. Now, he approved the plan, and I only mention this in the event that the current plan, as we know it, the tree-thinning plan, is to be changed and then has to go back to the Land Trust. We support the current approved thinning plan that states, "Our method of logging would be the cut-and-drop method." That is, the tree trunks would be left to lie where they fall. None would be taken, added to park, although in order to reduce fire hazard, branches and limbs would be stripped away and burned. The trunks, in turn, would become habitable by turtles and insects, thereby affording us the opportunity to augment and enhance our nature education programs, offering members of the public a close-up view of this living visual teaching aid. All trees to be selected, to be down, rather, all trees selected to be down will be identified and marked by a forestry service. We do have strong concerns regarding damage to defected areas of the park where the thinning will be, if the logs are to be removed. Our concerns mirror those of the overall forest management plan, talking about the damage that may be caused, and then the cost to the city to repair that damage to the park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lisa Anderson? Good evening. Welcome.
I'm Lisa Anderson. I live at 7140 Kyle's Creek Drive, Fairview, Tennessee. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for hearing me tonight. I'd like to, I have two items that I'd like to talk about. One is I'd like to take this opportunity to honor a great man, Wayne Hall. I want to tell you a little bit about Wayne. He is a, he has been a successful business owner for over twenty years, and an astute business owner, an accomplished equestrian, and due to repercussions from the flood of 2010, he was forced to close his business. Despite this, Wayne did not lay around depressed. He took a job at a Fairview gas station to support his family, but the position he holds now is where he needs to be. He has given of his blood, sweat, and tears to this city for over twenty years, of which I've had seven, over seven and a half, to be able to serve with him. And every decision that Wayne makes for this city, he puts his heart and soul into to do the very best for our community. I commend each of you Commissioners who put Wayne in this position of interim city manager, and encourage you to consider him as the obvious candidate for the permanent position of city manager. I have not known a more honest, trustworthy, and dedicated man than Wayne Hall. I'm proud to call him my friend and colleague. Next, I would like to address the stir that has been going around the newspaper in our city about the hiring of friends and family members in the city of Fairview. There's no law against nepotism in our city or county. This has been going on for years. I see it as a positive. You can, every job is posted on the, in the newspaper and on the city's website, so there's a fair chance for anyone desiring a job in our great city to apply. Our city, while growing, is still small, and there's a large chance that while hiring, that one would know several candidates as family and friends. As long as the person who is qualified and does a good job, you know, as long as they do a good job, then it shouldn't matter. I think it's wonderful that the families in our community want to work here and make Fairview a success. It should be known, in the case of Tony Sutton and Patty Carroll, his son and her husband have both worked for the city of Fairview for over ten years, much longer than either of them have served as Commissioners. Alan Bissell's son, who does a wonderful job, has served for over a year and holds this position because he's the best candidate for that job. These men serve and protect our city and do a great job. I commend Alan for his letter, full of facts, on Facebook about the issues, and encourage everyone to read it to get the truth. I just have to ask Mayor Totti, you know, why this is being brought up now? Because we've had people in our city and in our county, for as long as I can remember, family, friends, all working together to make our families, our city, a success. And it just seems to me that with the hiring of Brandy Johnson, this has been brought to light, and I can only think of it as a tactic, because there's an election coming up in eleven months. I would hope that's not the case, but, you know, that's the way it's being perceived. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Cherry, please approach the podium. You have three minutes to deliver your comments or questions. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I would just like to make a quick announcement for the chamber, and also thank everyone who came out to our holiday dinner Tuesday night at Camp Marymount. That's a wonderful facility out there. For those of you that have never been to Camp Marymount, I'll say that I have lived here since 1994, and that's my, that was my first visit. It was an incredible facility out there. They have about 350 acres out there. It's another jewel here in Fairview that we should be proud of. The conference center out there holds about 300 people. It's well worth it. They will, if anyone wants to do weddings, or retreats, or anything you want to do there, all you have to do is contact them. They have a program director. They'll cater it. It's just a phenomenal facility. The food was wonderful. We had about seven, a little over seventy people that showed up. The entertainment was good. Just, we couldn't have asked. We had a lot of volunteers that helped pull this together. I can't take credit for anything. I stumbled and stammered through the, I got stuck with emceeing the thing, so, anyway, we had, Tamara P. was our Volunteer of the Year, which, is Tamara here tonight? Tamara is our director for the Fairview Boys and Girls Club, and she puts in countless hours beyond her, the duty that she has there. So every time I was telling people that, every time I see her, every time I go to Franklin or Nashville in the evenings, different places, she's always got a batch of kids with her that are not her own. And so she just goes way beyond the call of duty to help our, those latchkey kids in our, in our community. And so she's, she's one of those unsung heroes here in Fairview. The, our Chamber Volunteer of the Year was Jessica Cherry, my daughter. The board voted for her because she was a chamber member before she became a chamber member. She is the producer of our Monday Morning Memo, and she has made all of us look really good this year, and we've had a good year. This Saturday is, of course, is the Christmas Parade. The lineup is at nine o'clock, and the parade starts at 10 o'clock. We're hoping and praying for good weather. AccuWeather says that we're going to have maybe some good luck in the morning, Saturday morning. It's going to be terrible tomorrow and tomorrow night, but everybody pray for good weather for the Christmas Parade. Don't let it rain on our parade. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Next item on the agenda is the awards and recognition, and we have an award by Chief Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of distinguished guests in the audience tonight from the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Pool, our insurance people, if you would, and understand they have something for the board. I'd like to introduce Haley Galick and Anthony Roman.
Hello. Welcome to Fairview.
Thank you for having us. I'm Haley Galick, and I work for the TML Risk Management Pool, and I have with me Anthony Roman, the town's underwriter, and also a citizen of the town of Fairview. The pool was created over thirty years ago specifically to provide for the risk management and insurance needs of Tennessee cities. We're a self-insurance, risk-sharing partnership of Tennessee governmental entities. We currently work with over 500 governmental entities in about 90% of the Tennessee cities. Through our loss control program, our goal is to help you to keep both your employees and citizens safe as you provide vital day-to-day services. We appreciate that opportunity to serve you. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting the Board of Commissioners a check for $1,500 on behalf of our Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. This program is designed to help members purchase employee safety items, equipment, safety education, and training materials. The pool will reimburse members up to 50% of that cost. Chief Cooper applied to purchase bunker gear that was out of date for the fire department. In addition to our Safety Partners Grant, we also offer onsite loss control surveys and training, a driver's safety grant to help promote defensive driving and training, and a legal hotline program, along with our online portal and coverage that's specifically tailored to your needs. So we'd like to commend the city for your commitment to safety, and we look forward to continuing to serve your risk management needs in the future.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And then the other thing is the actual check. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jump over it. That way they can see better in the picture.
Does it matter that your phone's ringing?
It'll be in the picture.
Don't answer. Okay, I won't. Okay. Can you do one more? I always do two.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Hand that off to Mr. Tom. Hand that off to you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce two new city employees. Chad, Dakota, come forward. Chad Delino and Dakota Day come to us from our volunteer ranks. We generally try to hire the volunteers, and both of them have years of service with us. So may I introduce Chad Delino and Dakota Day.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board Commissioners, I'd also like to introduce Michael Tag Erland. He has been hired in our Public Works Department, and Tag, if you would, come up, please.
Welcome back.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Anything else, Wayne? Okay. Will there be any awards or recognitions from the board this evening?
No, ma'am, not for me. No.
Next item is five, public announcements.
I would say public announcements would be the emissions testing Monday and Tuesday of each week from 7:30 till noon. Thank you.
Any other public announcements from staff or board this evening?
Mayor, is there, I know the parade's Saturday. Everybody needs to remember that, but I, Mr. Cherry, are there any, how would we know if for some reason the parade, because of weather, got?
I spoke with the city manager this morning, and the, I suppose we're going to make an early decision on that. We're about eight o'clock here. And with those big signs out on the boulevard, the day announce, we're going to have to make some phone calls to some key people, I suppose. Call the high school band. Nobody can know without the band starting off. If you don't see the band, don't show up. Lineup is at nine o'clock, behind Frank's.
John, is there some way that we can have, especially for the people that are planning on being in the parade, some number, something they can call and get a recording, or whatever the case may be, that has been postponed to the following Saturday, or whatever it is?
We could put a recording on the chamber's phone number. That's one. And I guess, does the city have a phone number that they can call as well? Well, our phone number at the chamber is 799-9290. We have the ability to change our outline.
Could we put it on channel 19, maybe?
That's a good idea.
If we could post it to channel 19, Nick's kind of indicating he can take care of that?
Website.
Then people could check the website after eight o'clock, and they would know. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me ask that.
Does the city have an emergency plan for robocalling people like the school does?
For people that signed up, we have an email system that goes out.
People that signed up for the newsletter from the city site?
I mean, you know, when we, when our kids were in school, we'd get a phone call. I mean, everybody would get a phone call saying, "School's closed," or blah, blah, whatever it is. They could contact their parents quickly. I mean, we don't have some type of emergency plan. We don't have some type of emergency.
I'm sure we could report it to one of the news stations if we do it early enough, before they go offline. They do it, I think they've already canceled some schools and things this, I'm sure we've already got, and some parades and different things that are going on, so that. And Chief, we can change the signage out on the road, just to the moment's notice, if I'm not mistaken. So, that's okay. Good idea.
John, did you make a decision on postponing or canceling Saturday? Postpone. If postponing, it would be following Saturday at noon, because there's an event going on in Westwood from like, I think, eight to 11:00 or something like that. They have a breakfast going on. Or it would be the following Saturday. So we would announce. Hopefully, right now, the weather's looking like it's going to break, so. Okay, so the contingency is noon on the 14th? Noon and 14th, or the morning, the same hours on the 14th. Okay.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, 6A is the minutes for the October 17th public hearing.
Move to approve. Second.
We have first, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? B, the minutes for the October 17th Board of Commissioners meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
First, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6C, the minutes for the November 7th Board of Commission meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6D, the minutes for the November 21st Special Called Board of Commission meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to make a motion for deferment until corrected. The presented minutes is not what the tape reflects, and I'd like to get direction from the attorney, please. Are the minutes required to be kept prior to the opening of the meeting? And if not, are the conversations prior to the meeting open allowed to be in the minutes in between the open and the close? We discussed this a little bit today, but...
If you've got a special call meeting, the minutes would be of what is actually conducted at the meeting.
From the open to the close?
From the opening to the closing.
I'd like to make a motion of deferment, amend the motion for deferment until the minutes are corrected.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That'll be item six. On to item seven, O Business. The second and final reading of Bill 2013-24, ordinance number 819.
It's an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article 8, Overlay Districts, Section 8, 301, Article 8-34, Flood Plane District Regulations, 8-302 Definitions, Article 8-37, Development District Regulations, 8-302 Definitions, Article 8-42 State Coordinating Agency, 8-303 General Provisions, 8-303.2, Basis for Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Hazard, Article 8-43. Move for approval.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7B, discuss and/or take action on Fairview City Projects, City Manager Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Keith is going to report on that tonight.
Mr. Paisley?
Yes.
Do we have a sheet or updated or anything for reference?
No. All I had was a report on the resurfacing project. There wasn't any updates on any of the projects. I had to come in last week on my week off to talk with the state. Seemed that the roads that we were trying, or at least Cumberland Drive, according to the state, was not a classified, functionally classified road of an urban collector or greater. And they wasn't gonna present the contract to the Federal Highway Administration for them to approve. So I had come in and talked to the local programs office and the long-range planning office with the state of Tennessee to clarify that before we actually submitted the applications to put this project out and use the STP funding from the NPO, that we actually went through the process of having Cumberland Drive reclassified to an urban collector. And so they finally got back, Kim Thompson with the planning office, finally got back to the long-range planning office and worked all that out, and figured out that the road was functionally classified. So she forwarded that application on to the Federal Highway Administration for their approval, so we can get the notice to proceed to design. So the project is moving forward, and Kim was actually gonna be on vacation this week, but she says she was gonna keep it up over her vacation to make sure that it got through, because she knew we was up behind the deadline of December 30th, trying to get that money obligated for construction. So probably next week, we'll actually receive the notice to proceed to design. Will has the design complete, but we have to get the notice to proceed before they can actually submit that design to TDOT for their approval. And once they submit the design to TDOT and they approve it, then they'll give us the notice to proceed for construction, and then that money will be obligated. So then we can kinda breathe a little bit, because then we got the money. And then we can plan on doing the resurfacing project after the winter breaks and get those two roads resurfaced in the spring.
Excellent report. So you're optimistic for the end of the year to be out of the considerations?
It looks like it. The way we have to follow the procedures of the Federal Highway Administration, and we have to follow their policies to make sure that we get reimbursed for all the money, well, at least 80% of the money that we spend. It's an 80/20 match. So there's dates that we have to comply with when we submit our reimbursement application to TDOT, and those dates have to match a timeline that we're on, so we can get reimbursed for that monies. And the NEPA phase, and the NEPA phase took us three months to get through. And we're hoping, and she is, Kim Thompson has kind of ensured me that getting from the NEPA on now to the construction phase is not gonna take as long. So she's saying that we should have everything taken care of by the deadline, and that's December 31st.
Do you feel confident if we have to request an extension, that that's already, the dialogue has already been open for that?
They know that actually the state held us up on the NEPA phase, because they let the documents sit in their office for two months before they actually let us know that they was complete. And all that's in the record. So if we get behind the eight ball again, surely that they will extend us another month or so because of their error.
Sounds like you're on the rabbit, keep running.
So we're very optimistic that we'll be able to retain that funding.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to report too on the road projects that we had, the King Road that y'all approved a meeting or so ago. It is complete. We got lucky, and they had a cancellation in Franklin, so they put us on the very next schedule. That is, that is, project is completed on Catherine Drive, they have promised, and also on Horn Tavern, they've promised to put the binder down before the asphalt plant closes for the winter.
Excellent. I appreciate you following up on that. See any other project updates? Any questions or comments from the board on the projects? Thank you very much. C, update on tree thinning in Bowie Nature Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I've talked to the logger, and I was concerned about how the logs was gonna be cut and dropped, and how many would be stacked on top of one another. He said at the most, it would probably be a couple to three at the most, and he would take about three weeks to a month to do this. The other concern that I have is what it's gonna take to remove all of the limbs and stuff that's cut. I've talked to the Public Works guys, and they seem to think as much as that'll be, we're looking at 250 trees in a 3.2 acre area. I'd like to see if we go ahead with the project, let them try to decay some before we have to change, to chip them. Maybe they will chip up a little easier, because they will be rough on our chipper. We are thinking that it might ruin one, and that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment. Also talked to the teacher out at the high school, the agricultural teacher. The seedlands and saplings that would be planted, he says they won't be available to plant for two to three years, because he says they need to at least be this tall before they're planted. This is oaks that he's talking about replacing with. So for right now, I'm gonna leave that up to the board, or the tree board, one, to give me some guidance on the actual, how long we need to let the limbs and stuff decay. And I'd hate to see a big burn out there, but who knows, that may be the best thing to do with all those limbs, you know, because there will be quite a few of them. I've rode around that project, I know, three or four times now, trying to figure out a safe way to have it to cut and drop without being a hazard to the citizens.
Have you drawn in the knowledge of Mr. Berkeley, the arborist on staff, I mean, the arborist for the city? Does he have any input?
I've talked to him briefly about it, but not at any length, and I can do that in the meantime, because it's nothing that we need to approve tonight. And so I'll do so between now and the next meeting, and report what he thinks, too.
Okay. Any questions on the update? Comments? Thank you very much. Item seven D, discuss and/or take action on loan for police vehicles and equipment. Didn't have a name next to it, so I'm not real sure, miss.
The loan was changed. What the city attorney wanted changed, it was sent back.
It was sent back to me, and I reviewed it. I would like to say that for a document of that size, there were not, there was not a great deal of changes. The ones that were required was things that are specific to Tennessee law. They agreed with them. They made the changes, resubmitted to me, and I reviewed it, and I have no problem with it as it was resubmitted. I would like to ask the board, when you're considering this, you need to pull out Exhibit C, which is the resolution that's required for passing this, which basically says you passed it in a regular meeting, it was duly advertised, you didn't violate any open meetings or public meetings laws, and the last thing being that, that it hasn't been, the resolution hasn't been rescinded, and we need to pull that out and let you read the caption to that, so you can pass the whole package as one, if that's your desire to pass. And you also need to pull out for separate action to get in the record, Exhibit G2, which is if you want to proceed under the self-insured provision. They have said they don't have any problem with that, it says that in the document, but I would like to have those on the record as if you pass the package, that you read the caption to the resolution and pass the resolution, which has a number, Exhibit C, and then either pass or decline on the self-insured provision.
Do we have the documentation in front of us to do that?
It's in the package that you have, Exhibit C and G2.
Who has the official document to be signed this evening? The board.
Just to make sure that we're on the right page, is this anything we need to pass at this time? Is there anything else that we need to pass at this time prior to signing this?
No. What I'd like to do is, excuse me, what I'd like to do is get those two documents, the caption read, and consideration for if you want to proceed under the self-insured provision, and then just, and have that in the record, and then if you pass the whole document, you could pass those with the document, but I'd like those two specifically brought out, because they are two biggies in the document. The rest of it is a general passing. And of course, if it doesn't pass, then we've done nothing except read the caption and consider the other part.
Would you like me to read it now, Mayor?
Has everyone had an opportunity to review what they're discussing?
Yes.
Well, somebody show me their packet. Where's the packet?
It was forty-two pages long. I did not print.
I just like to read with it, so it was like.
Number 23-13, Exhibit C, lease number 09288, equipment schedule 01, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a master lease agreement, equipment schedule number 01, an escrow agreement and related instruments, and determining other matters in connection therewith.
Moved to approve.
Should we approve it separate, or as all in one?
You can approve it, I'd be fine to approve it separately, and if the overall packaging fails, then that would not be sent to them anyway.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Is the questionnaire for self-insurance to master lease agreement in connection with the master lease agreement? Is that what you want me to read?
Yes, you don't have to read it.
Moved to approve self-insured.
That's what I didn't know if you wanted.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
We need to approve the full document now.
You need to approve the whole package, that the whole package contains those two documents. I just wanted in the record that those two documents were approved.
I think we need to just handle it all now while we're here. I've moved for approval of the entire document.
Second.
Would you read that first page, or? Not the resolution one, it's the first page one. That's okay. Well, it's a good. Motion and approval?
Do we need anything else?
No.
Motion and second.
We haven't voted yet.
No, we have a motion and a second.
Right.
This loan approval is for $505,000 for the 12 SUV new police vehicles and the equipment that goes along with it, in case the public's wondering what we're discussing. So I just wanted to address that for public record. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item?
A question before.
Go ahead.
Do we have the document ready to be signed? Can we go and do that while the meeting's open? Is that appropriate?
Is it even what you just handed us?
Let's give it to the mayor.
Give it to the mayor, okay.
New business, A, discuss and/or take action on finance review committee.
Mayor, we need for you to sign the document.
I will at the end of the meeting.
Let's do those at the end of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the discussion that we had last time, when the auditors were here, the year-end auditor, we discussed in a workshop about having an oversight committee or a review committee that would work with the city manager and work as a, maybe a quarterly, and they made recommendation of the city manager being possibly on the committee, two commissioners, and then public people. After talking with city attorney today, the odd number was something that was discussed as far as voting. The purpose of this committee would be to review finances throughout the city, and then be able to work with the reports that are given to the commissioners on a quarterly basis. It would then be given as a recommendation to the city manager. The city manager would then be able to do a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So we kinda walked through that for understanding. My question for the board, after speaking with several different municipalities and what their practices are, they asked a question about how many are on the board, and I said five. And they said, "Well, we have 20," or whatever. I can see that being a purpose. My question is, would it be a consideration that the board was the committee, or would we wanna stick to the discussion that we had as far as a few and some citizens? And I just wanted to see what y'all thought about that, so we can discuss it and make the best choices.
I feel like when the auditor was here, the reasoning of having citizens, maybe professionals, come in from the community sounded good. I mean, it never hurts to have a check and balance and to have, especially to give the citizens an opportunity to be involved. So I kinda favor that idea. I don't think either way it's right or wrong, and we could do, the majority wanted, only the board, but the thought of letting the citizens be involved and just, you know, be transparent on our finances, I always think is a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
I concur with Commissioner Carroll on that.
Okay.
Maybe I just didn't understand, sitting too far away from the auditors. But I'm still not sure I understand what the purpose of this committee is. How do they, what is it that they are going to offer as a committee? And so I don't really have my mind made up as to who needs to be on it, because I'm not really sure what it's gonna do.
Did you wanna share anything that you commented to kinda give clarity?
I think, I see where Commissioner Bissell's going, and I agree with him. I think what the committee would be reviewing, I like it better as a review committee than an audit committee, is get the, like, the monthly financial statements, review the, especially the large purchase items that are paid, or large sums of money that come in, and just the normal people who prepare these reports would still prepare them. And the way I would see it, the committee, city manager could make recommendations, or the committee could say which reports they wanted to see. You wanna see your bank statements, blah, 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 the payments to major, major payments, payments you made over, in that quarter that were over $50,000 or $100,000. And then they look at them, and if they have something, that's the reason I think it'd be valuable to have someone who's maybe in the banking or finance business, because they would see things that I probably would not see. I mean, I'm not on the committee, but I'm just saying that they look at that type of stuff every day. And it, you wanna let them look at it, and if they have a recommendation of, if they see something that that person says, you know, it could be better done in this manner, then that committee would make a recommendation to the city manager, and the city manager would report to the board. You wouldn't have the committee, they would be the strictly advisory committee to the city manager. If the city manager said, "Hey, you guys did a great job," I wouldn't just present that to the board. There certainly aren't precluded from having the chairman of the committee present it to the board, but basically it would keep the city manager in the loop, or he would be reported to, and then he would be reporting to the board. And the committee itself would, to me, would make, would be the one that would decide what they want, what they want to look at.
Okay. Well, follow me here for a second, because. Okay, well, follow me here for a second, because you're still losing me. The way our system works is the five of us set the budget. City manager can't execute outside of that budget without coming back before us. So in terms of this committee, this review committee, would be looking at the city manager's execution of budget.
Basically, yes.
And...
It's just having another set of eyes.
Would be offering alternative ways, methods, procedures on how, as the city manager and the staff executed the budget that we set.
Yes, sir.
They might could have gotten more out of the budget, might could have made some suggestions to us, that sort of thing.
Exactly.
Okay.
It's just another set of eyes looking at it.
Okay. Then the value of that, to me, is a different set of eyes than the set of eyes that's got to call their own baby ugly, which is the five of us.
Right, absolutely.
So it, I think, if that's the case, then that committee should be made up of the city manager, the finance director, and possibly one of us, but no more than one of us, and then two people from the public, for five people, so that they can actually, and they should not be an audit committee, they should be, let's look at how we spent money this quarter, and was this the best way for us to spend that money, or could we have combined things and spent money this way, or done something like that. So that would be my input.
And for what it's worth, I don't have a, I'm not trying to sway anybody, but I agree with the thing. I think that you should have at least one board member on there, just for continuity between the board of commissioners and that committee.
Yes. I think it gives the committee credibility to have it there, because often there may be something that we discussed that's germane to how that money was spent.
And that's your call, not mine. That's just my opinion.
The auditor did mention that the CFO was not, and if the city manager was present, he would not be a voting member or just making statements. So I just wanted to add that to your...
Well, I, yeah, I don't agree with that. I think that we, as the board, hold the city manager responsible for execution of the budget, and that any decision, any part of a decision on making a presentation to us that says we need to do it differently, you guys need to do it differently, it needs to, either this committee, if we don't put him on it, it needs to report to the city manager, and the city manager makes that call before it comes to us, or if we want this committee to report to us, it should include the city manager.
Oh, I agree. You misunderstood. The CFO, they said, should not be on, and the city manager would be there, but only be able to liaison between the staff and the committee.
Well, I'm not sure...
CFO was the one...
If the CFO is not on, maybe, the CFO would be there, but not a voting member of the committee, is that what it is?
Have the CFO as the next official member?
Because I don't know how you're going to look at a set of records generated by your bookkeeper, no offense to Tom, but generated by your bookkeeper, if your bookkeeper's not there to explain the nuances of how the books are input. I mean, I'm an accountant by trade, but I've never been an accountant in a city. So there are certain things that I've learned by reading the audits each year that I've been up here, that we have to do as a city that don't necessarily conform to standard public accounting or to standard business accounting, or certainly not to tax accounting. So I think it's important that whether they're a voting member or not, doesn't matter to me, but it's their product is what we're reviewing. I think they should be there to be able to answer questions and explain it one way or the other. I just...
That's a recommendation of your auditor. You don't have to follow that. There's nothing, it's not illegal for you to have the city manager and the CFO on there as voting or ex-official members, either one, whichever one you want.
Okay. And I do believe that we talked about citizens or people of the profession. We had mentioned John Blade, him being outside of the city. Maybe we need to address whether that's an option or not. And then we had spoke about Mr. Luke Ficken, and I know he has been spoke to by myself and Commissioner Bissell, and says that that's a good way for him to plug in and volunteer. So he's excited.
He's already taken steps with, Luke is the only certified financial planner currently in the city of Fairview. He's thriving investment up here, is Dad Jack, many of you may already know. Luke, in my conversation with him, and I don't know whether the mayor talked to him before or after I did, but in my conversation with him, Luke has already taken steps with Thrivent to get their permission to be part of this, and I will be highly supportive of him in that area, because I think he offers an expertise that no one else in town has right now. And I also think he is a, one of a group of young men that I've been talking to about getting involved in civil service. They got another one in the back there waiting on the planning commission vote. These young men are, you know, in their, well, they're not quite thirty yet, but they're our future, and to get them involved in our city government now is a great opportunity for us, I think. So, and Luke clearly meets that bill. He's here, he's married, his family's here, his livelihood is here, and so I'm really in support of him. So, I don't know about John, I just don't think John lives in the city. I don't have any objection to John, but I don't think...
And do we want to say that that's a, I mean, to be in the city is a requirement? Okay, so if we look at what we've discussed thus far, the city manager, CFO, one commissioner, Mr. Luke Ficken, and then if there be an odd number as requested, is there another citizen or someone that would like to be nominated for this committee?
Well, I think we could put an ad in the paper and ask if there was one, or contact any of the financial institutions. I don't know if...
Any of them live here.
But an ad in the paper would, those people that might be bankers or finance people that worked outside of Fairview but lived here. So, you know, to address the other one, but...
Okay, would we like to take any action or make direction for an advertisement to pull together a committee? Or would there be any volunteers from the commission?
Could I ask a quick question? You spoke of other cities and twenty-plus members on these boards. Were these large cities or cities our size? And who would comprise a board of that many? Would it be bankers and such? Is that what mostly it was?
But they said a couple from the commission and then public and the...
Bankers and investment planners? Okay.
Would be any volunteers from the commission for serving on this board if we deem...
Well, I mean, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, along with the numbers, I think we should start small and add to it as our city grows versus trying to start now to run up a bunch of people, because we don't really, we have, I think, a pretty good game plan now that we've talked about it here tonight, but we probably still have got to flesh it out a little bit and see how it works. And I'd rather do that with a small group of people than to do that with a large group. That's my input. That's not, you know...
Let's look at this in another way. We're talking about the makeup of it, but let's look at this of the discuss and take action on having the finance review committee, because we've never really taken the action of authority of forming that. So what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve having a finance review committee.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? In discussion, I'll just make note that if we can open up for an advertisement for a profession, someone in the finance profession that would like to serve on the finance review committee, that we open that conversation and on the website or whatever you deem as far as your advertising, and then be able to maybe pull together the committee as it forms, and talk about that last person we seem to be now looking for.
So we don't need to set the number of people tonight? Establish the number?
We've just kind of talked about five for it being odd.
We could just make the motion that the committee be five people to be determined. One commissioner...
Want to amend the motion?
One commissioner, the CFO, the...
We can make the layout. Right, right, right.
One commissioner, the CFO, the city manager, and two from the public with finance background.
Okay, so amended the motion of acceptance of the review to have the format of what he just said?
One commissioner, one CFO, one city manager, and two from the public with finance, banking background.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second. Okay. We have an amended motion of the matrix, and any discussion on that? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have the original motion of the acceptance of the finance review committee. Be any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, appreciate that. Item eight B, discuss and/or take action on vacant planning commission seat. We have five applications, and my first statement is, thank you very much for your participation. Thank you very much for the concern, and thank you for volunteering. Would there be any nominations from the board on filling the vacant planning commission seat at this time?
Well, Mayor, if it would be okay with the rest of the board, I would like for those that are here to have the opportunity to, one, stand up so that everybody knows who it is, and then, two, if they would like to come to the mic, and I know we've seen their packages, but I always like to hear from them personally as to why they would like to join us in this, if you will. So if that's okay with you and the rest of the board.
We have some present. I will make a public notice or a public comment that the, all of the applicants were not duly notified to be present this evening, and we do have some that are present, so they would like to ask questions or just see what your interest is. If you'd like to approach the podium, Mr. Mangrum, Mr. Butler?
I would like to thank y'all for filling this spot or looking at the option of filling this spot for Mr. Hall. That'll be some hard shoes to fill, because I think he's got a lot of knowledge. The reason that I applied for this position, I served on the planning commission several years back, and with my background in the construction business and developing business, I think my knowledge would be of great access to that board, just for the bulk of what that board does is related to developing and approving of subdivisions, rezoning type things. So I think that me having that knowledge would be a benefit to that board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowe?
I've had six years' experience in planning and zoning in various capacities, chairman, vice chairman. I've been on zoning boards. I've even represented homeowners' associations before city councils, and I represented a church one time that was starting up and to get a zoning variance and to allow it in an industrial area, but I'm just trying to lay out some experience that I have. Now, from that, I've developed something that I think is important to have on a commission, especially the planning commission, because it's pretty busy. And Fairview has a blank canvas right now on its growth, so it's very important to have this comprehensive plan to establish that and grow from that for the future. And I'm excited about this town. I just moved here, but I'm really excited about it. It's got a good feel, the people are great. I said, you know, you drive down 100, it's the start of it, it's got Bowie Park, it's really great. I'm excited about it. But one of the things I think that I can bring to the planning commission is wisdom and discernment, and that comes from experience. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rowe, how did you know to be here?
I have been coming to a couple of meetings, so I was going to be here anyway, so...
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just trying to get the flavor and, and also the mayor called me today, too.
I called all the applicants to just visit with them.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Butler?
Brandon's another one of those young men I've been trying to twist that arm. That's a pretty tough arm to twist right there.
I think so. You better leave his arm alone.
Good evening, I am Brandon Butler. Thank you guys very much for having me tonight. I've been fortunate enough to be a city of Fairview citizen since I was a young boy, had the opportunity to see the growth that I've seen in my short years. I think with the continued growth inevitable for the town, I think we need to have a plan to ensure that we both preserve the small-town feel that we've all learned to grow, love, grown to love, I apologize, but also embrace the great opportunities that continued growth has to offer. I think that with both my professional and personal experience, I would be, I would be honored to have an opportunity to use that experience toward the continued success of planning commissions already headed in that correct direction. But thank you again for having me tonight.
Thank you very much. I have an email that was sent at 2:50 today from Mr. Wayne Lowman, which is another applicant. Thank you for calling and visiting today. My interest in the planning commission opening for the city's consideration for me serving as the planning commission. I understand from our conversation that there will be a discussion and possible action for filling the vacant planning commission seat at tonight's meeting. I was unsure, I am unsure if I am required to attend in order to be considered, but it was not notified of such. Please accept my apologies for being unable to attend due to previous comments, commitments. Wayne Lowman. I just wanted to read that. Is there anyone else that we've overlooked this evening that is here? Okay.
Just as an explanation, I don't know if we put that out there yet, the decision can't be made tonight or voted on due to the fact that we didn't properly notify each and every applicant that had submitted an application. Appreciate the ones that are here. The policy does state that you must be present in order to be considered for this vote. So the proper notification will be sent out, and it will be addressed at our next meeting. Is that correct? I'll make that a motion, that we do address it at our next meeting.
I would amend that in that those that were here tonight, if for some reason they couldn't be back at the next meeting...
They're not required.
That they, this would be considered their appearance, because we had a chance to speak with them, and they had a chance to speak, so...
But they are welcome to come back.
They are welcome to come back, but if they, you know, if they had something that would cause the same situation for them, then they shouldn't be required to be tiered twice when the other person only had to be here once.
We have an amended motion on the floor?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the original was for the deferment of the item for the next meeting.
To the next meeting, make sure we have proper notification.
Seconded that?
Nobody.
I second the original motion.
And I have a question.
Discussion.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Who's in charge of making sure they're notified? Who are we putting in charge of that?
I believe that's between the city manager, staff, recorder...
You'll take care of that? Yes, sir.
Who notifies on a normal basis?
Recorder. Okay.
There we go.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is eight C, discuss and/or take action on approving contract for consulting engineer for resurfacing project. Mr. LeVorn?
When Grigson Maloney was hired to start the NEPA phase four, the resurfacing project, we were intending to just use them on our normal agreement that we had with them as our city engineer, but to be reimbursed for the funds that we're going to expend in this project, they had to have a contract, because we had to present that contract to TDOT and has been in their records for us to be able to be reimbursed for that money. Contract amount is for fifty-three thousand dollars, and we will be reimbursed approximately forty-two thousand dollars of that. But to follow along with the Federal Highway Administration's guidelines, we have to have a contract on file.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
First and seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eight D, discuss and/or take action on assistance to firefighters. Chief Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Every year we go for this firefighting grant. We have a safer grant for people, and the assistance to firefighter grant is for things. And we're going to ask for this year is the self-contained breathing apparatus, the air packs we wear, and spare bottles. We're beating the bushes all the time, looking for other... We're beating the bushes all the time, looking for other funding for equipment we have to buy anyway. We will need four air packs and four bottles for the new quints coming in. And in '15, half of our inventory expires. There's a 15-year lifespan on air packs. The total amount of the grant we're asking for is $55,800. Our contribution's on a sliding scale. We don't get anything, we don't have to match anything. If we get the entire $55,800, our match would be $7,790. Or they could authorize us anything in between. So, we've asked for this every year because we've had a safer grant since 2007, we've never got it. If you don't ask, it's like lottery, you don't ask, you don't play, so you can't win. So, I'm asking for permission to put this in. Let's see what they do with it this year.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Item E?
Same thing.
Discuss and/or take action on the Firehouse Sub Grant?
Same thing. Was in Firehouse Subs, strongly recommend the Hook and Ladder Sandwich, it was excellent. Saw a placard on the wall that Firehouse Subs has several million dollars allocated for thermal imaging cameras. We're asking for $7,000, there is no matching, it's an outright grant and the deadline's tomorrow. So, I've got to put it in.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Reading the walls at your restaurants. Next item is nine, city manager's items for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have tonight, this is kind of something I'd like to see if we could add once a month to the agenda, is a five to a seven-minute segment for local businesses to come in, describe their business, promote their business, give them a chance to compete with the large businesses that are already here, give the local people a little better shot at competition, so to speak. So, all I want tonight is just an approval to add it once a month, possibly the second meeting of the month, and have a business come in and just profile their business.
Just one business a month?
One business a month, you know, five to seven-minute segment. And.
Do it after the citizens' comments, just first thing at the start of the meeting?
Are you asking for a vote?
Not a vote, just a general consensus, is that all right with you all to do so?
After citizens' comments or?
Public announcements? Public announcements?
Awards and recognition, we're recognizing new business, however you want to do it.
Somewhere before they approve with the minutes when we get into the actual business of the city.
Public announcements?
The only thing I would say, I think it's a wonderful idea. I know that Ms. Anderson kind of did her own version in the Planning Commission, and I appreciate that. But I, I would, with our time, maybe seven might be a little long.
Five minutes?
You know, maybe five under, you know, kind of thing is my only thought on it.
Well, you brought up another, Mr. Cantrell. Would we have any liability of concern of inviting someone and not inviting others? Or how would we have a record to show that all was open and we were equal opportunities?
What I would suggest that you do so that, that you don't get into conflict with somebody saying, well, you invited me, but you didn't invite this person, is put an ad in the paper, put it on the website and let the businesses contact the city manager and say, I'd like to be there. That way, if you, if you're not, if your business is not on there, it's because you didn't contact them. I mean, I've seen this so many times where you haven't, and I think it's a great idea, but where you have a good idea and you contact this person, you contact this person in inadvertence, or you don't know about this person, at the very least, you're going to have some alienated feelings.
Right.
And if you put it in the newspaper, put it on, you know, put it on your website. Put a sign out here where the people come in on the board where they can see it and say, if you would like to profile your business at a future meeting, please contact whoever the city manager is or whoever you want them to contact. Then, everybody has an equal opportunity.
I don't like the idea of us initiating the contacts. I think that the business person should initiate the contacts. I also think that if they sign up for a night and then they miss their night, they go to the bottom of the list. They don't, we're not going, you know, can I have next week and shuffle and all this other stuff? You miss your spot, then you go to the bottom of the list.
Be handled on a first-come, first-served basis.
First-come, first-served.
We'll see, it's not, I mean, I think it's a great idea, we'll see how it unfolds.
Okay.
Okay? Other comments?
Just everybody be safe with all this bad weather. Thank you, Board.
All right. Staff comments this evening?
Last month, we had a total of 576 calls. We're down about 25 or 30 calls. We had 24 non-injury accidents and five injury accidents for last month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, if I could ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How we stand right now on percentage as we've done in the past? I know that one time we tried to project a 10% decrease in traffic fatalities, injuries. What percentage are we at now?
We're about at 30% and we're holding, so.
It's a very good job.
The only way, to get it better would be to come in here and say, no accidents.
I'm afraid that the next couple of days, you're going to change it big. I hope not.
Well, and I, you know, and I like to brag on my guys while, you know, they work hard, they work overtime, and they know when the weather's bad, they know to be here. And I just, I've got a great crew, so, thank you.
Thank you.
We ran 22 calls last month, excuse me, 72 calls last month. And at the staff meeting this morning, the city manager, police chief, and I discussed at length what we would do about the parade. We're going to come out early Saturday, the three of us will make an evaluation. We're going to err on the side of safety. And that's why we wanted to know if it's a postponement. John, I guess he's left? Or would it be a cancellation and now he's decided to postpone? But we'll make an announcement early as we can. And also, there is a robo-calling system in the county, it's for emergencies only. You can't use it to reschedule a parade. So, we do have that capability. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff comments this evening?
Mayor, you have a copy of my report. In the Planning Commission, we're, in the Planning Department, we're trying to streamline the way things get through the Planning Commission. So, this month, for the Planning Commission's agenda, we've actually reviewed a conceptual site plan, preliminary site plan, and the final site plan for Alpha Technologies to build a 21,000-square-foot building in the industrial park. This is to be the first item that we've tried to streamline to get it through the Planning Commission quicker. So, we're going to see how that goes in the reviews at the Planning Commission next week. We also reviewed a preliminary plat for Phase II, Section 2 of Cows Creek subdivision. All those items will be on the, are on the agenda for next week and will receive a recommendation for approval. Building permit department issued eight building permits for the month of November. The total construction cost for those permits was $835,950. We issued 24 electrical permits. Didn't receive any complaints, forward, just general complaints. We fielded 18 calls for service-related orders for those to the proper departments for work to be completed. Building Code's department completed 13 building inspections and issued seven certificates of occupancy. The Code's violation department received 10 complaints for the month of November. There were 15 violations, letters sent out, no letters of failure, comply, and one citation written.
Thank you very much.
Parks Department would like to let everyone know that the night hike for tomorrow night has been canceled and we're looking to reschedule that due to weather concerns. We also have a concert getting put on December 7th, which is Saturday. Hopefully, the weather will be clear enough to have that. And that's Yankee Dixie. They sing a couple of different types of music there, trying to get us into Christmas spirits. And we also have another concert, the Fireside Concert, hosted by the park and the Friends of Nature Park with, I believe it, Jeff Kirk and friends on Sunday, December 15th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And let me go back to Yankee Dixie is from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Excellent.
And like to let everyone know that we have, the street department is prepared, ready for this weather. So, trucks are on standby.
Thank you. I just want to commend the Park Department, the December events are very impressive. And I appreciate you all's hard work in trying to keep the festivities going with what we trying to show off, which is our crown jewel, Bowie Nature Park. Thank you. Other staff comments? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one comment tonight, and it's just to update the board as to where we currently stand. On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, whatever date that was, I filed with the Circuit Court in Williamson County, the, a motion for summary judgment in our annexation contest lawsuit. That is to be heard January the 6th at 9:00 a.m., January 6th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. in the Circuit Court in Franklin. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Communications from the Commissioners, Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one open item and maybe I missed it when we said it. But we were talking about the Greenway project and the letter that needs to be issued. And I believe Commissioner Sutton said something about wanting to have, or maybe it was city manager Hall said something about wanting to have a workshop before next meeting. Did we set that up or not? Maybe the next meeting?
It'd be the 19th?
And just, we meet at 6:00, is that what we're saying? Okay. That's all I had, Mayor, I just, I didn't write anything down. If I don't write it down, I don't remember it.
Workshop, 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall on the 19th for the purpose of discussing the Greenway grant. Is it, Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give us a little highlight of the moving, like, how's the History Village going? I know you've been working with Dr. Rice, just kind of, you know, the process or anything?
Well, the little house is gone. And so, apparently, it got moved from one place to the other. And so, they're, they're working on that and getting the foundation set on that. They're still, the company that's working on the windows is still working on the windows. Now, Dr. Rice, I don't think's here, but Lisa's here. Have you all been able to meet with Mr. Doughty yet about the?
I've talked to him and he's been extremely busy for some reason at this time, but he has assured me that he will meet with me and he's got an engineer's name for us. So, that's in the works.
So, that's, that's really our next step because, because the, it's, it's really in Dr. Rice and Historical Society's stuff. Because they, we've got to get that engineer plan before we can discuss and decide how much money, if any, we want to spend to help with the wiring. And of course, Midstate can't put the HVAC in until we decide, until the wiring's fixed. And so, it's kind of on hold until they're able to do that. And, and as Ms. Anderson said, I guess Mr. Doughty just hadn't had the time to do that. But the other parts are coming together really well. And he is, every time I talk to Dr. Rice, he is highly motivated to meet our timetable of opening up those buildings and having a public open house, if you will, to coincide with our Independence Celebration that we do each year. So, I'm really pleased with how it's moving along.
I know I should have mentioned that during the, when we were talking.
I didn't mind at all.
I just thought, oh, when you were talking, I were meant to ask that. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I know that it takes a lot to come out, give up your time, sit through the meetings and stand up, but it's very important. I mean, it really is, accountability is everything. I think that that's really how I got involved, was sitting and coming and getting involved. And I never mind any comments, I don't mind answering any questions. As a matter of fact, you can even say whatever you want because when you come and sit here, I know you know what you're talking about. So, I just really appreciate all the support and the thanks. And just like everybody else, I'm really embarrassed of what this Tennessean article did. And I, it just broke my heart that innocent people that just wanted a job and wanted to work in their home community, that they, the article tried to devalue their careers and lives, and I'm a part of it myself. And if you have any questions, I have a feeling that we all feel this way. Come ask us, you know, ask us, you know, what's going on and, you know, we'll answer them to the best of our ability. So, feel free to call me anytime, I'm all over the web, so feel free. Thank you, Mr. Hall, for stepping up. You know, I don't even know how you've done what you've done in the last few weeks and just having a lot going on in your own life. And I appreciate everything you've done and, like I said, can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of things I want to address. And I guess they'll come in the form of an apology. And this will be directed basically due to the recent media coverage and the expressed concern regards to the family members being employed by the City of Fairview. I will present the following facts that I'm sure will never be presented in the newspaper. This is concerning my son, Mark Sutton, who I'm very proud of. And I would think by the time I was elected the second time, most people in this community knew he was my son. 1995, Mark bought a house and moved to Fairview. 1994 to 2001, Mark was an employee of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office where he was promoted to corporal and then sergeant over the booking and records department. 1997 to 2001, Mark served as an auxiliary officer for the City of Fairview without pay. He put his life on the line each and every day for this city. 2001, Mark was hired as a full-time officer in February, March of 2001. He went through his post-training and just to add a little note to that, he did it with a broken foot. If anybody knows anything about post-training, it's very difficult to be able to get through it, but to accomplish it and graduate with a broken foot is even more. Mark was promoted to corporal in 2004. Mark was promoted to sergeant in 2005. Mark was promoted to captain in January of 2011 and still holds that position today. I, on the other hand, moved to Fairview in 2006. I was elected a city commissioner in 2008. So, as you can tell, there's a great deal of difference between the time of 1994 and 2008 when I became a city commissioner. And I just want to make a point that he is where he's at today by what he did, not by me. I'm going to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for the input that you gave on citizens' comments. I appreciate that. Wayne Hall, I recommended for the job and I'll do it again. Everybody have a safe and be very careful this weekend. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Mayor, if I could, could you, I know tomorrow is the application deadline for the city manager position. Do you have any correspondence with Jeff on when he's going to get back with us? Do you, is, do you have that information?
Tomorrow's the deadline and we.
Mark's the deadline, and I think it's the first meeting in January. He hadn't sent me that email that he's going to, first preliminary report being the first meeting.
Are we, are we going to request the applications before then to look at them, or?
He's requested, do you want to go ahead and tell him?
I believe he's requested to bring them to y'all.
The email that was sent last week to you was requesting that the Commissioners be alerted that he is looking for a workshop on the first meeting, and that you get it on the calendar. So we might want to discuss that as it's brought up.
Okay. That's fine, all right. I think the, the mayor brought up a great point when we were talking about the loan thing, and I guess a lot of people might not have known what was going on on that issue. And the city was having to buy police cars to protect the citizens, basically. We have a fleet that is falling apart, and insurance did not even want some of them on the streets. And as the mayor stated, it was over a half a million dollars that we're having to spend, and we have not spent hardly any money out of the regular budget over the last decade for police cars. They've always been bought out of the drug fund. So this time, we are having to bite the bullet. But just to let you know that Chief Harris and Captain Sutton have done a tremendous job, this was, it was a long process to get through this, and I'm glad that we finally got it done so we can keep the citizens protected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Just going to sign it after the thing.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, thank you for your attention.